Not do that, but that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have in Section 39.7 of the Village Code an ethics law which sets forth exactly how this is handled. Why do we have a second law to do this?
So there's in the handbook for NICOM, there's a difference between the Ethics Code.
The NICOM handbook? Can we get out of NICOM? Can I go back and get out of that?
There is an Ethics Committee established in your code.
There's a difference between the Ethics Code and Ethics Committee, basically. We have an Ethics Code currently. We do not have a committee.
The committee is established in the Ethics Code, Section 39-7.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve the Ethics Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, very good. Notice, notification of liquor license application, Chapultepec Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC. A notice was received on June 3rd, 2024 from Chapultepec Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC, located at 6 Losi Lane in Central Valley. They are applying for a liquor license from the New York State Division of Alcohol Beverage Control, State Liquor Authority. A letter was sent on my behalf to the Police Department to determine if there is any reason why the village should object to this application being approved. And they stated, "There have been no issues or concerns to prohibit the application. Therefore, I will instruct the Village Clerk McLennan to send a letter to the State Liquor Authority with the previously stated information." Okay, moving along. Schedule public hearing, introductory local law 5 of 2024, entitled Beautification Committee. So, under the leadership of Mayor Egan, the Village of Woodbury was granted a quarter of a million dollar grant from State Senator James Scoofus to be used to beautify village-owned parcels throughout Woodbury. That money has virtually gone unused. So I am suggesting the establishment of our own Beautification Committee to work on a set of projects to meet the grant requirements. So, can I have a motion and a second to introduce Local Law 5 of 2024?
All motion?
Do I have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Can we discuss this, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
We seem to be, again, trying to duplicate an existing town committee. And I'm not sure how this committee differs from the one the town is involved with. It seems like we're duplicating another entity, another government entity, where we could actually just, through an intermunicipal agreement, have this all done through the existing Beautification Committee.
One, the money was granted to the Village of Woodbury, so the money must be used for Village of Woodbury parcels and parcels alone. Two, I honestly don't see the issue with starting our own Beautification Committee. I don't look at it as a duplication of services. There are no services currently being duplicated by the village and town. So I honestly don't know what the fuss is about with it, so.
Would the committee be temporary in nature for the life of the grant, or would we keep it after?
I guess that could be determined by the village, by the committee as we move forward, but for right now, I have $225,000 to spend. So that may take a bit, but I am looking forward to getting this done. So, I have a motion and a second to introduce introductory local law 5 of 24. Do I have an all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do I have any no's? Okay. No referrals or secret actions are necessary for this local law. So, can I have a motion and a second to authorize the Village Clerk McLennan to schedule a public hearing for introductory local law 5 of 2024 on June 25th, 2024, at 7:30 PM to entertain public comments for the purpose of creating a new chapter, 16, of the Code of the Village of Woodbury, entitled Beautification Committee? Yes? Okay, so you want me to push it back to?
Sorry, only because if she sends it tomorrow, it's probably not going to make it in their timeframes. Yeah, so you're going to have to do, I'm sorry, July 11th. I don't mean to interrupt.
No, necessary. What date you got there, June 11? Okay, July 11. Okay. Well, I was going to start. Okay. So, can I have a motion and a second to authorize the Village Clerk McLennan to schedule a public hearing for introductory local law 5 of 2024 on July 11th at 7:30 PM to entertain public comments for the purpose of creating a new chapter, 16, of the Code of the Village of Woodbury, entitled Beautification Committee? Oh, advertising the Times Herald Record. Yep.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll get to this. Okay, advertised for bids, cleaning and televising and sanitary sewers and manhole inspections. Can I have a motion and a second to approve Village Clerk to advertise for bids for the capital improvement project, excuse me, project cleaning and televising and sanitary sewer and manhole inspections, 2024?
So moved.
Hold on a second then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and finally, advertised for bids, repairs to sanitary sewers and manholes. Can I have a motion and a second to authorize the Village Clerk to advertise for bids for the capital improvement project, repairs to sanitary sewers and manholes in 2024?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? I had a second.
All in favor? Aye.
All right. I'm going to take care of that. I'll put it on there, probably at the next agenda. Okay? Okay, moving on to everybody's favorite part of the program, public comment on anything. Don't care what you talk about. So, public comment. And remember, Jimmy, it's legal to speak for more than five minutes.
And it is kind of funny, you know, I don't plan to filibuster today unless you got suggestions, but thank you for removing five minutes. It's, you know, if we go on too long, and I expect the mayor or somebody cut us off. So I thank the board for that. I have to thank Rob. Two times, we have had a minor, minor issue in the Brigadoon, and Rob and his crew show up right away, they take care of it, and they make sure it's right. I can't thank you enough. And then, Happy Father's Day to all the fathers on Sunday. Thank you.
Jimmy! Jimmy, do I have to create things for you to talk about? All right, anyone else? Public comment, please? Chris Graziano Highland Mills, fourscore, and seven years ago, our forefathers brought forth, all right, I'm just kidding. I had to bring a little levity to this situation. No, I just want to congratulate the board and say thank you for reappointing Mr. Gerber as Chair. He's done more for Woodbury in the last four or five years than I've, any of us have ever done on any of these boards, and I want, I really think that's a great choice. He lives Woodbury, he breathes Woodbury, he bleeds Woodbury, and he's done a great job. So I want to thank you for that, and it was a really excellent choice.
Maria Hunter. I just want to, to the board members that I spoke about at the public hearing earlier, there was no disrespect to either one of you, so I just want to make that quite clear. I want to thank the board for hiring and recertifying John Hand and Alex Presty. It's going to be a pleasure having them back here in town. I know the caliber of their expertise is incredible. I've worked with John before, not with Alex so much, but I know John does his work, and when I used to work at Nike, my God, he was there, and he made sure everyone at Woodbury Common was on their toes. So, gentlemen, welcome back to Woodbury. And I want to echo what Chris Graziano said about Chris Gerber. Chris was on the planning board with me when I was as chairperson. He taught me a few things that I didn't know, and he is doing a great job as chairperson. For nineteen and a half years I was on the board, you couldn't have picked a better person to reappoint, so thank you for doing that.
Maria, stay there for a second. So, I want to put, I want to put the beautification hat on for a minute. So, I want to make it known that my game plan is to appoint you as chairperson in this Beautification Committee, and Vic Forelli be your liaison for that said committee. I have a lot of projects that we've discussed that really did not get off the drawing board, but for starters, Oakloe?
Yes.
I want to preserve Woodbury's history. I know there are people who have run for the village mayor spot who wanted to tear them down. I don't want to do that. I want them lifted, I want them stripped, I want everything, new flagpole, Buena Vista. I want there to be signage there.
Yep.
And it is a project, Buena Vista, because we've got a utility pole there, there's a stop sign that's down there.
It's up now.
It's up now.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob. Good job, Rob! Okay, we still have the lights on Valley that we haven't gotten done.
Correct.
But the other project with the other lights that we had ordered, or Desiree Potvin had ordered, were the lights that I may want to put in front of the firehouse, which were the decorative lights. I also want you to be involved with signage for the fire department because we are no longer a fire district, so I would like something out there that's just classier, okay? This room, you know Bobby is working on it, and he's working his way, painting and whatnot, so I am going to want this committee to be involved with, working with the Historical Society to fill the walls here with the history of Woodbury. So, you've lived here for many, many moons, more so than me.
Forty-five.
So I came here when the Walmart sign was going up, that's my history. So, I definitely want you to work on that.
That's not what most of us call it, but, okay.
I know, I know. I do want you to work with, with John Hand and his staff because we're going to need a legitimate sign outside there on that property with a flagpole and whatnot. So I definitely think that is something else we can work on. The banners, we've talked about for a very long time. So, and you see what I went through with the banners with that, with that.
Oh, yeah.
It is, it's like a full-time job. It's a full-time job. But there are other Cromwell Lake, I think I'm going to want you involved with as well, because I have plans for that. But I think if you, I, and Vic put our heads together and just find some decent people to work with, we can get a lot of this done. So, that's all I got. Okay? I don't know if Vic wants to add anything?
I'm like, thank you, I'm tired already.
Probably sorry you got up there, huh?
I am. Can I, can I sit down now?
Peroni Circle, I didn't even mention. Well, I did mention Valley. Peroni Circle?
I have a, I have a list at home that, my other, my Beautification Committee from the town, that, I must have about twenty, twenty-five items on it that my committee, we all talked about what needs to be addressed, and I never had the chance to sit down with the former building inspector because there was never availability to do it, do so. So as I whispered to John earlier, once you're settled into your position, I have a few things to discuss with you. So, he knows how tenacious I can be, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, you have a good relationship with the state senator, and I think that you and Vic have a very good relationship with the state senator. He's providing the funding graciously, and he's actually been lighting a fire under us to make sure we spend our monies.
James, I call him James, and I can get away with it when I call him that. I go back a long time, he's the same age, went to school with my son, and I was his first treasurer when he first started running for the town of Woodbury. So James and I, we text each other. He's on, when he texts me, I pick up that phone, so.
Your husband's here, are they late-night texts?
Shh. Bob gets them as well, because James, he sends it to both of us.
Bob's in bed by nine, James is texting by 11. Yep. All right. Hold on, I would like to add that I am, Maria, you and I go back a long way, at least fifteen years, if not longer. We've worked together on a lot of projects. I am looking forward to working with you again.
Thank you.
Working with you again.
I'm looking forward to, once this all gets settled and puts into place, and I'm glad to have my old secretary back guiding you.
As the mayor mentioned, I do have a good relationship with Senator Scoofus that also goes back about fifteen or so years, so we'll be good.
You know, on another note, this Memorial Day Parade, I know I thanked everyone. I don't know if anyone realizes, this is the second year that I've been the chairperson of this parade, and this is the second year in a row that a congressman, a senator, an assemblyman, along with our elected officials from the town and the village, it's never happened before. So I take great pride in that, two years in a row that I was able to do that.
Lisa Hints, you're up. I don't know why I'm slouching for that.
I will be quick. Lisa Hints, Highland Mills, not going to address Climate Smart tonight. I have a different hat to wear. It is in lead of our Memorial Day Parade. It is our Local American Legion. As you know, our members of the American Local Legion are of an older population. Mr. Doyle himself is 91 years old, and has recently been named the Commander in Chief of our American Legion. Mr. Morello needed to step down due to illness. I have offered to help them increase their membership, but we need to increase it with some young blood. These guys don't want to let the American flags for Veterans Day, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, they don't want that flag ceremony to go away, they don't want their Veterans Day ceremony to go away. And a lot of our young vets are not joining the American Legion. We don't know why. Everybody seems to think it's the lack of a bar. I'm not sure. Tim's offered his bar, if that's, if that's the excuse, we can remove that excuse. But if there are any American Legion younger gentlemen that are out there, or if you know somebody that's part of, you know, a vet that's younger, please have them speak to Mr. Doyle and sign up. We're going to host a breakfast for them at Cemetery of the Highlands this Saturday, just so they get together and enjoy one another's company. They don't do that enough. If anybody that has a veteran that wants to attend, we're going to be there from 10 to 12. But we just need to keep our veterans' morale strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak?
Sandy Capriglioni, Central Valley.
Town Councilwoman Sandra.
As the village liaison on the town board. So we have made some informal requests with regard to the board, the village board, meeting us, meeting with the town board, specifically Supervisor Luciani and myself with regard to the IMA. They were informal requests, so tonight I'm making a formal request. It expires in six months, and since the village was created in 2006, I think both boards, regardless of their relationship, they strove to stop any duplicity. So, this is a very important document, and we'd really appreciate, you know.
Movement.
Can we get?
I will address it in my board comments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Going once, going twice, go ahead.
Howdy, BJ Mendelson Monroe Gazette. I have a simple question. Who killed the bear? I know it's funny and it's a little ridiculous, but at the same time, there is something kind of serious that came out of this story involving a, two different stories that were provided, one by Woodbury Police and one by the DEC. According to Woodbury Police, they investigated the matter, DEC came, they took a tissue sample, they sent it back, said the bear wasn't poisoned. That is the official Woodbury PD response that's in their blather. According to DEC, that did not happen. The DEC stated that they did not perform any sore tissue sample on the bear, didn't perform any sore necropsy on the bear. I don't understand why there might be a discrepancy here between the chief of police and the DEC, but I do want to remind the public that according to the FBI, if someone is capable of poisoning a large animal, they are just as capable as harming people around them. So it is something that I have asked the police chief to look into. I understand he wasn't happy about that request. I need to again reiterate to the public and to the board to encourage the police to investigate the matter and see who killed the bear.
Well, like I said at that last meeting, the, when I spoke to the DEC and the Environmental Conservation Commission, no necropsy was done on the bear. They did not, they did not believe it was necessary. I argued that fact, but was getting nowhere. So, to my knowledge, based on what they've told me, there was nothing done. And then the bear was left there, and by the way, was it officially taken out of there, Carmine? Not yet. So what the HOA did there was they then put lye on top of the body, which means I've got more dead animals every time they're eating the lye. And now the HOA has put a tarp on the body, and the body still remains there. So it's, you know, it's funny, but it's not funny. It just, so, it'll be something we'll have to continue to keep an eye on, but I've never, in my 20-plus years here, never heard of a bear just coming onto private property and just dropping dead. So. And the traps. And the traps I did address with the, the Environmental Conservation Commission, for whatever reason, as I stated at the last meeting, the traps were out, they were, they were trapping small animals out there. I actually got, from Carmine, I got a picture of a possum in there. Like I had stated at that meeting, these are the good vermin, the possum. We want them, because they eat all the ticks and they're, they can get a snake bite and they will not die from it and whatnot. So, why they were trapping, I don't know. But if you are going to trap anything in Woodbury, you need a permit from the DEC. So none of these traps had permits on them. They were picked up by the HOA after I had a conversation with Rich Gattagio about it, so they have been moved. Like I said, for the life of me, I can't figure out why you would trap animals around Salzman Lake. So, any case. Anyone else? Public comment. Okay, department comment, starting with you. You got nothing, nada. Rob, and I love that color on you, Rob, it looks great. There you go. It brings out your, I was going to say that. Village Treasurer, you got nothing? Consigliere, confidential advisor? Uh-oh, there you go.
Thank you. Tara Burek, Central Valley. So, when I was sitting on that side of the table, and Mr. Fryban was sitting over there, he went to the podium and spoke false, just nothing true. And tonight, he went on to slander my husband. So, I don't take that lightly, especially for a volunteer of this community who gives more of his time than most volunteers, notwithstanding the fire department. I see firsthand the work and diligence he puts into his role on the planning board, and how serious he takes the job. And the fact that you can't even look at me when I'm speaking speaks volumes about your level of disrespect. And the utterance of false charges or misrepresentations which defame and damage another person's reputation is the definition of slander. So I can tell you right now that my husband has his educational requirements, has always had his educational requirements. So if you're going to come at him with something, please make sure it's factual. I cannot sit here and continuously correct you and your misstatements, because not everybody in the public will, will fact-check you, and they're going to think that this village is being, the planning in this village is being run by somebody who's not educated. And if you've ever attended any one of his meetings, you will know that that is the furthest thing from the truth. So I would really appreciate it if you did your homework, and you come up here and you state fact. You have a responsibility as a board member to state fact, and not mislead the public any more than you already have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tara.
No problem.
Okay, Village Clerk?
No, thank you.
Okay, board comments, starting at the end of the table. Trustee Fryban.
Thank you. Actually, I wanted to address Marie Hunter. I wanted to address Marie Hunter and the incredible job that was done on this year's Memorial Day Parade. As you know, I had asked for as much public participation as possible as a tribute to the people who, the military people who have fallen and who are interred or memorialized at the cemetery. And the ceremony was really inspiring, and I was really impressed with our fire company who were marching in pretty warm weather all the way down. And they, they went all the way to the cemetery, and they were there for the entire ceremony. So I really appreciate the work that was done for the Memorial Day Parade. I think I'm going to, I also wanted to, you know, the participation by the Monroe Woodbury Band, they, they basically serenaded us for the entire mile and a half. So they really worked hard. I do want to say that I appreciate that, and I will try to keep my comments as short as Mr. Neg's. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Fabro?
Thank you all for coming out. I'd like to start my comments in a positive direction. First off, I'd like to thank Maria for her work with Memorial Day Parade. That was a ton of work, I know, and I'm thankful for all you did. And Happy Father's Day to everybody. And I have one event for Climate Smart Woodbury. It's actually two separate days. It's our Invasive Species Event, Wild About Woodbury Lecture Series. It's going to be Thursday, June 20th and 27th, from 6:30 PM to 7:30 PM at the Woodbury Senior Center. And it will be Dr. Anne Wiborowski, PhD Science Advisor with Orange Environment, presenting on those invasive species. Now to the slightly more negative part. I understand campaign time is coming. I understand there's some personal conflicts here in this room, but I would appreciate if the audience and the board refrained from sniping at each other. I know it's hard. And I'd like to make it clear, too, I was in favor of the Ethics Committee, if that wasn't clear before. But I, I really hope it doesn't become a clown show. And with that, thank you all for coming out. I'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, Trustee Fabro. Trustee Sirell?
Want my mic?
First, I just want to welcome John and Alex. Looking forward to working with both of you, and so happy that you're on board. Second, I want you to know, Matt, anything that comes out of my mouth has nothing to do with election season. Whether it's election season or not, if I need to say it, I'm going to say it, okay? And that's nothing against you, I understand what you're saying, but this is nothing about elections. Second, or third, I think I'm on third. Third, I would like to, I guess I'm a little taken back that when asked if you verified the credentials of the ZBA, you did not. So, if you're targeting Mr. Gerber, which it seems like it, I implore you to stop. I want to thank Chris for his service. I personally listen to every single meeting. If you ever listen to a planning board meeting, they are most times two to three hours in length, okay? So the meeting alone, the time that they put there, now think about all the documents that they need to review. I know how much time I put in to just a village board meeting, and that's not and that's not that technical. Okay? This time with this senior housing project, and I am, I am not a science person, I am not a technical person, but I will put in the work to comprehend it. And I had to put in a lot of time. So I can imagine what it takes that group of men, it's all men now, men, to go through that, every piece of paper, all the documents, and be prepared to speak at a meeting. So if you're gonna target someone, that is not the person you should be targeting. Prom is Friday, which is tomorrow. And I would like to wish all our seniors to have a happy prom, hope they have a fantastic time celebrating all their accomplishments, and most of all, be safe, guys.
Thank you, trustee Suriel. Trustee or deputy mayor, Furelli.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. But what I want to do is, the mayor brought that article in photo news, and I just want to bring out what I think was a glaring omission. In it, it says that, um, the village board was met with near silence regarding the request of the resident, but that the village attorney advised the board not to comment. What's not stated in here is we were advised not to comment because there was a notice of claim filed. And we couldn't comment because there's, because of the notice of claim and there was attorneys involved. So I just want to make that clear. That should have been in this article. It's not. To me, it's a glaring omission, especially when I see, you know, another quote that residents deserve a village board that is fair and consistent. Um, can't be fair and consistent if the article isn't consistent. So we gotta get all our ducks in a row here. If you're gonna make a comment to the paper, make sure it's accurate. Put everything in it. Don't just pick and choose what's gonna be put in it and what's gonna be left out. And I don't know who wrote that article, but obviously they didn't do their fact-checking either. And that's all I have to say on that. And I really didn't want to go, go there. But, Mr. Mayor, since you brought up the article, I just figured I would add what I considered a glaring omission. Uh, having said all that, again, Maria, thank you for the Memorial Day Parade. It's, it's a pleasure and you do such a great job. And I know how much you go through, just in the conversations that we have. And, um, hopefully next year I can do more for you than I had been able to do. So that's, that's the goal.
Thank you, deputy mayor, Furelli. All right, so I'm gonna kind of be all over the map here. It's gonna be hitting a bunch of points here and there. So let me just start. This is the worst time of year for the village clerks in the village of Woodbury between taxes and water bills and end of budget and budget modifications and whatnot. So just for the record, I just want to give kudos to village clerk McLennan next to me, uh, deputy clerk Romanison, Claudia Romanison, and village treasurer Desiree Povin, who have been working long hours to make sure that everybody gets their tax bills and water bills and whatnot. So thank you all. A couple of things. So first off, Wayne Courts, okay? I did post something about that. I did speak to Wayne on Monday. He is working on getting a meeting with him and his partners. This was a holiday week. So, uh, he did let me know that the golf course is officially closed as of Sunday. So there's no more golf going on there. Um, it does look like what Mr. Courts and his partners want is development on that property. I'm not really looking to bend. So, but I will take the meeting because it just makes, if, if I learn nothing from Mike Queenen, you always take a meeting and just determine what they're thinking. So I will take that meeting and I will come back and let the public know how, how it went. Uh, our new building inspector did reach out to me, Mr. Hand, on Monday. Uh, let me know that a title search was done on the Neiman House, on the Neiman property. Okay? That is usually the beginning of a purchase of the Neiman property. I am letting you all know that here tonight because I don't think it's, I don't think it's landmarked. And quite honestly, they can tear the building down. So before you come with pitchforks and torches and whatnot at the village, they can tear down the building, the out structures and whatnot, the caretaker's house and whatnot there. So this is what is going on. Um, honestly, I have not much to comment on other than that. So I just want to make the public aware of that, that that's what's going on. Uh, for the record, the village of Woodbury does not own Brickley Field. So if you have heard that, we do not own Brickley Field. Okay? Uh, Carmine, you are gonna be my choice to lead this Ethics Committee when the time comes. I apparently, according to the code, have to put it out there, but you are my guy to do that. And I want you to start with me. I will give you whatever you need. I will. I hope you find. Yep. No, but that's, that's where I'm going with that. Um, I want to talk for a second about loyalty. Because loyalty, anybody knows me, loyalty is a big deal to me. And I bring that up because of Chris Gerver. And my game plan was to talk about Chris, knowing full well that trustee Fryban was going to vote him down. And I don't believe for a second this has anything to do with his certifications. Because I know for a fact that the man is over-certified to be the planning board chair. Always has been, always will be. And he does stay on top of his board members to also be certified. Uh, I think Sue Suriella brings up an interesting point about how the zoning board was not investigated, but my planning board chair was. Chris, nobody, and let me just say this, and I will say it because I consider him family, more than a friend, family. Nobody does more for the, for Woodbury than Chris Gerver. This, for those, you would have to be on the planning board or be on this side of the table to understand what goes on each and every meeting, the amount of paperwork. The entire meeting this past week was the DEIS for the Woodbury Commons. It was a hundred people speaking from all over, except for residents, and I'll get to that, about the, the pleasure that we have here in Woodbury to have the Woodbury Commons here. So understand when I get upset when people want to dump on my planning board and my volunteers, I am not going to have it. And if it turns political, it is. Because last year's campaign and this year's campaign is going to be about my 30% tax increases that did not happen. And how Chris Gerver and the planning board are slowing down everything. Not true. Chris Gerver and the planning board are not responsible for global warming. They're not responsible for the extinction of the dinosaurs, the breakup of the beetles, Keith Moon's death, or whatever else you want to come up with. Okay? They come in there every meeting. If there are problems with an application, my building department will tell you. It's a problem with the applicant. Almost 100% of the time, it is a problem with the applicant. It is not a problem. So for Tyler Retschel, or Jim Fryban, or John Kimmelman, to have Chris Gerver's name or my planning board's name come out of their mouths is insulting. It's insulting to five individuals that barely get paid for this. The cost don't meet what the pay is. Never will, never have. Okay? I bring up John because John Kimmelman, who couldn't even run a golf outing, goes to a men's club meeting and brings up Who's. Okay, that's the old savory spot. Okay? Now, that application has been sitting in limbo. And it has nothing to do with the planning board, even though he insisted it has to do with the planning board. Now, I posted on Facebook an update on Who's. I spoke to the owner. Okay? Spoke to the owner. I had my attorney speak to their consultants and the owner to try to move this along. Okay? But to be honest with you, I, I, I don't know why this is being held up so long. And it has to probably do with the consultants and why he doesn't have proper consultants on this. Okay? Has nothing to do with my planning board. Meanwhile, he also brought up the winery. The winery he brought up is being held by the, held up by the planning board. The winery hasn't even closed yet. Okay? It's not even closed. So if people want to go out there and lie about a group of volunteers, so be it, but I will call you out on it because I am done. Okay? The last election, so people know, I was approached about removing Chris Gerver from the planning board. And I was told they were gonna make my life decision easier because they were gonna remove Tara Burek. And I wound up with two new trustees. And I refused to remove Chris Gerver because he happens to be the best damn planning board chair in Orange County. And I actually feel right now that this is the best damn planning board that we have had in Woodbury in a very long time. And that's no disrespect to anybody that has come before, but the skill set that is on display here with the addition of trustee, or CJ Graziano, makes this a very formidable planning board, very smart planning board. Okay? What was done in that election because Chris Gerver once again was getting blamed for every application being held up is not the truth. Put a damn application in properly and things will move along. Okay? When you don't put it in properly, guess what? It's going to get kicked back because I have a very good group of consultants as well. Okay? So blaming a group of volunteers doesn't work for me. And I will have their back. And like I said, you are gonna hear this as people knock on your door during election season. Oh, it's the planning board that is holding up Who's. You could have a brand-new restaurant here in Woodbury if the planning board got off their tukus. It's not true. Okay? I can almost guarantee that most of the stuff coming out of those two gentlemen's mouths and the guy at the end of the table is not true. Okay? If you have a question, you know how to get hold of me. Because everybody does. Okay? Get hold of me. Now, going to the Woodbury Commons, they had a planning board meeting where no residents of Woodbury came out. Okay? We had two people from Woodbury who were residents, and they happened to work at the Commons. Now, I will take some of the blame for that because I do not post the planning board agendas nor the zoning board agendas on the village Facebook page. I don't do that because it just opens up Pandora's box of questions that I have to then monitor all day. So the alternative is to shut commenting off. This was an important application in front of us. The Woodbury Commons had everybody. They had everybody from the Orange County Tourism, New York State Tourism. They were selling it. Okay? How wonderful and great an expansion of the Woodbury Commons is. And I kind of know that the residents of Woodbury are not crazy about the expansion of the Woodbury Commons. But that's not what my planning board got to hear that night. What they got to hear was a army of people in favor of this project. So moving forward, what I am going to do is start posting the planning and zoning board agendas. I may turn commenting off, or I may have the planning board chair, Chris Gerver, help me in terms of answering any questions that come up because he's the most knowledgeable on this. In the meantime, uh, an idea that the consigliere had floated two years ago, and we got hit with COVID and then it never happened last year. Okay? And I'm gonna have deputy mayor Vic Furelli work on this with Tara. Is what we are gonna do is we're gonna conduct an open house here. I want to teach the residents of Woodbury how the planning board works, how the zoning board works, how a bill becomes a law, just like the, uh, um, yes, yes, there you go. I'm just a bill. Yes, I'm. So I'm gonna host one of these here. I'm gonna have a, um, a group of consultants to answer questions. I think people just think that somebody puts something in front of us, it's gonna get approved, and that's not. Okay? It is a process. And they have to present their case, just like a law, a legal case. They present their case and the five judges decide. I have no say over the planning board. Okay? Other than picking their consultants. But I think that this may be an educational thing. I will have Jeff in to do the filming of it and we'll put it on YouTube. Okay? In the meantime, I'm also gonna have Vic Furelli work on something I talked about years ago, which is this pamphlet to simplify some of the sheds, pools, fences, some of that type of, um, requests of the building department where somebody can print it out like a realtor and just say, okay, here's what's required. So maybe it simplifies life for my building department and it, it shows us doing our due diligence. Okay? Um, but that will start working on. And I will put it together and like I said, we'll have it here. Um, Tokyo Spa, by the way. Tokyo Spa is gonna be reopening. Oh, it is open already. Okay. It is opened. They did. So Neil Kraus, Neil Kraus, you can use your coupons there, your gift certificates. Okay? Neil did post on Facebook on a 5,000 group page, uh, a 5,000-member group that he had gift certificates for the year and he didn't know what he was gonna do with them. Well, Neil, it's reopened. And there, you used them already. Where else? Anyway, it will be something that jointly the building department will work with the police department to monitor and move forward with. Um, okay. This IMA. Between the town and the village exists the interminable agreement, which basically divvies up what the town gets and what the village has. Okay? Now, I am gonna make my position perfectly clear on this. Okay? I don't think the IMA should exist, but it does. Okay? I am gonna make my position perfectly clear on what I plan on doing with this IMA. Okay? So first off, for years, okay, I have thought that the police should be under the purview of the village. My departments, my building department, my highway department, my fire department work too closely with them. And it doesn't make sense to me that they're in the town side. Now, you are gonna try to be sold that this is personal. It is not personal. It is business. Okay? This is going to hopefully make my life easier and will create hopefully a better connection between the police and my departments that quite honestly count on them more than the town departments do. So this will be part of my negotiation with the IMA. But I wanted to make that stance perfectly clear. For the men and women of the Woodbury Police Department, nothing changes. The cars, the, the, where they report to work, their union contracts, their pay, everything remains the same. So they're not losing anything. The only difference is, is that the name on the check changes and the badge potentially changes on the shirt. Okay? So I wanted to let the public know that that's going to be coming. Because I have no issue sitting down with the town, uh, grabbing trustee Furelli or deputy mayor Furelli and sitting down and getting this done. Um, I had asked, and Sandy was very great, great with it, let me get through budget, and then Mike Pinella resigned. So it's been kind of one of those things where it's like, there's always something hitting the fan. What is personal for me, and I will finish with this. What is personal for me are dogs and cats. And anybody who knows me knows that I do not travel around with my boy Tony for, for photo ops. Okay? The girls know this because Tony comes in and he's quickly, quickly nibbing at Desiree's heels. He's sitting on your feet. He just, he, yeah. He's my, he stays away from me and then he's just following me all over the place. And cleaning Bobby Blazier's. I am very much a believer in planning the work and working the plan. So my game plan, and I already know who I'm hiring and what I'm doing, is to also have the Woodbury Animal Shelter transferred over to the village of Woodbury. I, like I said, I know who I'm hiring, I know what I need to do. I have a plan here and my plan is to work that plan. So for me, it is probably the most important thing. me, it is probably the most important thing for me in Woodbury. I have four cats, three dogs, and quite honestly, I said to the high school kids last year, less kids, more dogs, okay? Do not create any more kids in this world. We need more dogs. So, that is basically all I got. It's a mouthful, right? Okay, that's it. With no further business discussed or comments received, can I have motion in a second to adjourn this meeting?
Could I have one last item for discussion?
No, no. Is it what business?
It's not business. I just wanted to clarify something.
Okay. Go ahead, Matt. Go ahead.
I would not just have voted to appoint Chris Gerver as the Chair if I did not respect his expertise. That's business?
[inaudible]
Is it dead?
Very dead.
Okay. I would not have just voted to reappoint Chris Gerver if I did not understand and respect his expertise. I just wanted to make that clear for you all.
Matt, nobody was questioning that, because I think you voted for him, didn't you?
I did.
Yeah.
But I wanted to make it very clear for the public.
I gotta work on that.
Secondly, I'd like to thank everybody who was reappointed to positions besides Chris, and John, and Alex. I'm happy to have you back.
Yes.
Hopefully, we get some good zoning and crack down on some violations. Thank you.
All right. Can I have a motion in a second now?
Yes.
I have a second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next meeting, as you know, is scheduled for June 25th. Until then, time waits for no man, unless that man is Chuck Norris.